I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board Meeting of August 6, 2015, to order at 6:02 PM. And roll call, please.
Mayor Hunter.
Here.
The clerks here. Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero is absent tonight. Manager May.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise?
Oh, I'm sorry. Attorney Zemanek is here tonight.
If everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Good evening. First item, open forum. Is there anybody here who's not on the agenda would like to address the board? Seeing none, I'll close open forum and move on to reports. First report is my report, and I'd like to, we have a Safety Staff Awards, Service Appreciation, and I'd ask Mr. Mike Chorney, who is our Safety and Loss Control Coordinator, to please come up to the podium and tell us about it.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and elected officials. I'm Mike Chorney. Some of you might not have met me before. I am the part-time Safety and Loss Control Coordinator. I retired from the village full-time in June of 2013 with eighty, thirty-eight years of service. I returned part-time to work in November of 2013, and I now report to Kathy. Serving and protecting the health, welfare, and safety of the village employees, our citizens, and general public is the top responsibility of all village staff. The safety culture among the Village of Westmont employees is in great shape. That is reflected in the village's recent Irma IMAP score of 100 percent compliance. Irma is the acronym for the Intergovernmental Risk Management Association, of which the village is a charter member, joining in January of 1979. The IMAP is the acronym for the Irma Management Assessment Program. A little bit about Irma. The Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, or Irma, was founded in 1979 and became the first municipal risk pool in Illinois. Irma is a risk-sharing pool of currently seventy local municipalities and special service districts throughout northeastern Illinois, which have joined together to self-manage and self-insure their property, casualty, and workers' compensation claims. Irma has an exceptional in-house claims department to manage all claims in a timely and responsive manner. All members also participate in a comprehensive risk management program, the Irma Management Assessment Program, or the IMAP. A little bit about that. The IMAP process is conducted on a three-year cycle for all members in good standing. The IMAP program provides the member and Irma Risk Management Services with an evaluation of each member's risk management programs in three major categories: Risk Management Administration, Employment Practices, and Injury Liability Prevention. The IMAP consists of three phases: the IMAP Evaluation, the Regulatory Visit, and finally, the Hazard Survey. In June of 2015, we completed the IMAP Evaluation, and due to our 98 percent score on the 2012 IMAP, we were able to perform a self-audit and then respond to Irma. The Executive Safety Committee and the Departmental Safety Committees were key in obtaining this excellent score. I will discuss the committees later in my report. The second part is the Regulatory Visit, and that's going to be happening next year. The Regulatory Assistance Visit will be scheduled in the year following the IMAP. This visit will be scheduled in 2016, as I said, and will cover various regulatory requirements such as OSHA, IDOL, Department of Transportation, and EPA. This program will assist Westmont in ensuring compliance by providing employees with appropriate policies and equipment necessary to perform their jobs. Then the last part of the three-phase IMAP is the Hazard Survey. The Hazard Survey is an onsite observational visit used to identify life, safety, and fire regulatory hazards in members' facilities. Irma is very thorough during this visit. I have accompanied Irma staff on the last three Hazard Surveys, visiting all of our facilities, but also the overhead ground storage and the ground storage water tanks. All doors are opened in every facility. All the nooks and crannies are surveyed. A report is then generated, and we respond to Irma with the compliance of any issues that they possibly raised. The Village of Westmont's safety culture. A work culture of safety starts at the top, but to be successful needs to permeate throughout the organization through activities done at every level and by every single staff member. Our goal is to make safety, risk management, hazards awareness, and loss control a top priority for everyone. The Departmental Safety Committees and the Executive Safety Committee are key to that goal. Public Works, Administration, Police and Fire, all have their own safety committees. Some meet monthly, bi-monthly, or quarterly. Minutes are taken, recorded, and then shared with staff. The Departmental Safety Committees serve as a liaison between the Departmental Employees of the Village and the Executive Safety Committee. In that role, the Departmental Safety Committee's functions shall include, but are not limited to, identifying annual specific goals and objectives based on loss history. These Departmental Goals and Objectives are reviewed by the Executive Safety Committee in January of every year, and then signed by the Department Heads and delivered to the Village Manager for compliance with the Village Risk Management Policy. Creating and maintaining among employees an active interest in practicing safety awareness on the job. Review safety suggestions presented by employees. Review accident records and evaluate the process of Departmental Safety Loss Prevention efforts. Addressing issues that will promote the health and wellness of all employees. Recommending to the Executive Safety Committee methods for improving the village's risk management program. Bringing to the intention of the Executive Safety Committee issues that cannot be resolved within the department. Carrying out the Executive Safety Committee's directives and supporting actively its decisions and recommendations. Conducting facility inspections based on building facility self-inspection criteria located within the safety manual, and reporting unresolved issues to the Executive Safety Committee, and periodically review personal protective charge, or PPE. We'll talk about our Executive Safety Committee now. The Executive Safety Committee develops, implements, and oversees the administration of the Village of Westmont's Risk Management Program. In that role, the Committee's functions include, but also are not limited to, the following: developing and recommending risk management programs intended to enhance the personal safety and well-being of employees, residents, and the general public, and to control the severity and frequency of accidents in order to reduce damage to property and equipment. Coordinating, establishing and implementing annual risk management goals and objectives designed to meet the needs of the village based on review of loss history. Coordinating, establishing, and implementing annual risk management goals and objectives designed to meet the needs of the village based on the review of loss history. I repeated that one. Reviewing all motor vehicle accidents, equipment or other property damage accidents, and work-related injuries and illnesses. Here, the ESC works to find the root cause of these incidents and accidents and make recommendations based on those findings. Departmental Safety Committees will review all accidents and incidents within each department respectively in advance of coming to the ESC so we can discuss those accidents and incidents. Presentation will then be made to the Executive Safety Committee. The ESC is responsible for reviewing all accidents and incidents. Reviewing safety-related statistical data, which is provided by Irma. Records and reports provided by the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency to HR or to Department Heads or to the Village Manager. And then sharing those with the ESC and developing criteria or changes in policies based on those. Here is a copy of the thirty-six pages of the village's response to Irma for the 2015 recommendations and the self-audit. Irma, after review of our response and proofs, raised our overall score to 100 percent compliance. I would like to restate this: Irma gave the Village of Westmont a perfect score in regard to our organization's ongoing program. Yeah.
Thank you.
I would like to share one additional success story that came out of the IMAP process. In 2005, in advance of the 2006 IMAP visit, I was looking over the criteria, and Irma added a new wellness category to the worksheets. I wanted the village to be ahead of the curve, and went to Kathy in HR and asked her opinion on starting up a Village of Westmont Health and Wellness Committee. She was all in. And with the approval of the Village Manager, I solicited volunteers for the committee. The Health and Wellness Committee has been a great success and example to other Irma entities. Successful initiatives that have come from the Wellness Committee include the St. Jude Race to the Flag 5K, our Lunchroom Healthy Snacks Program, our Lunch and Learn Program, Health and Wellness Challenge, and some of our local, our social events, such as the Annual Village Picnic and In-Service Awards. Thank you all for your time, and now it is my pleasure to read the names of staff participants on the village's Departmental Safety Committees and the ESC. Police Department, Safety Committee Members: Tim Radke, Scott Muska, Tom Kozielski, Jeff Borgart, Scott Bukovic, Roseanne Terry. Fire Department Safety Committee Members: Brian Murphy, Craig Scala, retired, Rick Bosek, Leif Johnson, Jim Little, Eric Blaskovich, Dan Sullivan, Darrell Parrish, Burton Cheate, Robert Sipek, Rob Ratcliffe, Tim King, Village Hall, Mike Chorney, Annette Leaks, Patricia Mielkarzki, Karen Rimkus, Jackie Garvey, Spencer Parker, Glenn Logelberg, and Public Works, myself, Mike Ramsey, James Cates, Bian Bussi, Jim Wright, John Yader, Randy Tuccio, and Jim Burke. And finally, our Executive Safety Committee. I chair the committee. Kathy Casey's on the committee, Patricia Mielkarzki. Lynn Johnson is our secretary, Brian Grun, Steve Riley. Craig Scala was on our committee, and I think he was the longest sitting member until he retired, I think fifteen years. Mike Ramsey is our vice-chair, James Cates, Karen Rimkus, and Glenn Logelberg. I thank all of them and all the people that work on our safety committees. At this time, all those that are present, let's walk forward and let the mayor hand out your award. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Did you?
Mike, I think the one thing that's very obvious is you're the right person to bring back. This started when you were full-time. Now it's your part-time, you're still providing a great service to us.
Sure.
So, wow, you get the first one, too.
Thank you.
And I got Kathy Crane instead of Casey. Glenn?
Stand around for a photo.
Who? Where's Glenn? He's in the...
I'll just add while you're doing that, every time this IMAP is done, we've had very impressive scores. They've always been over ninety-five, and, you know, a lot of hard work for many years, not just this time around. And we've always been number two behind, you know, one other member or community, and we, you know, not just, you know, to catch up in that competition, but, you know, to get the score. So, this hundred percent is, it is very impressive accomplishment by everyone.
Patty, Glenn.
I also wanted to mention that, as a result of the work from the committee and the work on the, you know, the safety focus, we do get, as part of our annual contribution for Irma, there is an amount where they say, here's how much you should pay, here's how much we're reducing because of your prior experience, which comes as a result of the culture. And so this past year, we had a reduction of $60,000 as a result of how well we've done with our experience. So that's attributable to these individuals here, and it's a great safety culture that we have that saved us that much money.
That's Mike.
Congratulations.
If we have two candidates. This job, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
I think what they like to do, they like to take a group picture, those that are here, if you could please, I guess Larry is going to coordinate the, if you can come and make a horseshoe right here. Go ahead.
Left to right, I do.
Again. Get in here.
Come in front, that's okay.
If you're short, come forward.
It buried the women.
Denise is in here.
Spencer.
Spencer's hiding.
Again, congratulations to everybody. Thank you. Glenn, do you have any questions? Okay?
You're doing a great job, Mike.
Thank you.
Yeah, really do. Summerfest.
Yes. Well, that was my next report. This weekend, starting tonight and going through Sunday, we used to have a summerfest in town that was pre-taste, pre-Fourth of July, and it fell by the wayside with the other activities. But what did not fall by the wayside is our sixteen-inch softball tournament, which starts tonight, is played at Veterans Memorial Park on the Little League Field. It brings back people who either worked, lived, went to school here. It becomes a reunion weekend. So if anybody wants to stop by Veterans Memorial Park, the championship games will be played Sunday afternoon between noon and 5:30. Tonight and tomorrow night, there's four games. Saturday, there's nine, starting at nine in the morning. So stop by, Nancy's Pizza is serving pizza and some Gatorade and pop, so everybody is welcome. I have one more item, but I'm going to wait till a little bit later, till the individuals here. And with that, I will ask Clerk Simmsky if she has anything.
I want to announce that our next Public Information Committee meeting will be August twentieth. And please, turn off your TVs and get to the street fair. It's fun. Everybody's out there walking around, having a good time. Don't be watching TV. Go to the street fair. And lastly, happy birthday to Manager May. His birthday is tomorrow.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Executive session today? All right. Attorney Zemanek.
I've got nothing to report tonight. Thanks.
And Manager May.
Mayor, I have one item myself, and actually briefly, I did email you all, but we've got this notification from the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference regarding their Legislative Action Program, and not, actually, Trustee Addington sits on the Legislative Committee of DuPage Mayors and Managers. But what is in here is just a request for any things that you think are topical, or, you know, the obvious ones are already discussed, so this doesn't need action tonight. But if anything occurs to you, you know, fill that out and return it to me, or Trustee Addington, and we'll make sure they get submitted so that the whole conference gives attention to it. If I could, with Trustee Nero's absence, I have some information. The next Public Safety Committee will be on Thursday, September 3rd. Kids Camp, the final kids camp for the year, the graduation is tomorrow. And we have the street fair tonight, of course, but last week was a very impressive, special street fair with the fire truck night. And actually, DC Riley, if you would, give a little recap on our activities that evening, because it wasn't just showing off equipment.
Thank you, Manager, Mayor, and the Board. Last week was a outstanding, beautiful evening. The Fire Department had thirty-seven fire trucks from twenty-seven different communities downtown last week. It's the largest that we've had. The crowd was amazing. And then we finished it off with a loud parade. We beat the fire, the police chief's parade. Couple of the trustees and my own kids got to ride the parade, so they loved that portion of it. As the manager said, today is the final session of the kids camp. We have twenty-four children attending today, and that will be over tomorrow. So that'll be the third session, and we'll put seventy-five kids from most of the Westmont schools, a couple out of Holy Trinity, and some of the Girl Scouts from the local surrounding area will be, have gone through this kids camp and learned a lot. So we really look forward to having the kids every year. And then one last thing, if I could, Manager, and Glenn, maybe if you could put the screen on, I'm not sure. We just want to remind everybody about Patriots.
Move it to the corner of the podium there, on the yellow, yeah. Might not fit, but...
Yeah, it's not going to fit. But obviously, September 11th this year, at the Westmont Police Fire Facility at 500 North Cass at 2:00 PM, the fallen heroes of September 11th. So I want to remind everybody to please come out and join us on this special day to remember the fallen heroes. Thank you.
Thank you. Heroes all ahead.
I'll move on to trustees. Trustee Barker.
Just two things this evening. One is, Wednesday, August 12th, at 4:30, we'll have a Community Development Meeting here before Planning and Zoning. That is off our regular rotation. So I encourage everybody to attend. We will be talking about fees and things that come through the Community Development Office and how that relates to the neighboring towns. So that is a good meeting to attend. And then also, Westmont First, again, will be the third Wednesday of the month at 7:00 PM here as well. That's all.
Thank you. Trustee Guzzo.
I have a few things. We just had a Finance Committee meeting. Our next Finance Committee meeting will be September 3rd at 4:00. I just want to touch on a few things that we discussed at the meeting. The Westmont Lions Club, we got a report from Trustee Addington that the Red White and Barbecue Festival was a great success, but we all knew that. So thank you to him. We had a visitor from the DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau. She is the Executive Director, Beth Marketti, and she touched on a few things. There is a pilot program for a municipal grant to bring conventions into the Westmont area. So I believe that we will be doing a purchase order on our next meeting to help pilot this program, to help bring some more tourism into the village, and that is a hotel motel tax grant. We also discussed a purchasing policy approval threshold, which will be showing up on a future board meeting. We're not sure which one right at this point. And I would just like to thank everybody for getting involved in the committee, and I appreciate all the support. So that's all I have. Oh, and one more thing, Cruisin' Nights was amazing. It was nice to see everybody out there. The fire trucks were amazing. My heart is with the Fire Department, and it was just great to see everybody and go on out and enjoy the festivities. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Barry.
We have a Public Works meeting coming up September 17th at 4:30. Again, the public is always invited. Environmental Improvement Commission, the next meeting will be August 18th, and they're going to feature a guest speaker from scarestart.org talking about energy conservation, water conservation, pumpkin composting, and more. And on a sad note, I'd like to wish deepest sympathies to the Oldham family. Lorraine Oldham passed away, ninety-one years old, a longtime resident of Westmont and member of Bethel Church, and my condolences to her family.
Thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. The Administration Committee meeting, the next one, will be October 1st in this room, so please come out and join us for that one. We do have a survey that's currently available. It's regarding the Taste of Westmont and the Westmont Street Fairs. We already have over one hundred respondents to it, and we're hoping to get a whole lot more. So please go onto the website for the village and go through westmontillinois.gov and look for the survey there. Give us your opinion, because the only way we're going to make it more appealing to you is to get you involved. So if you could make it a point to go online and do that survey, we greatly appreciate it, because at the end of that, we're going to have a meeting between the Special Events and the village to address the issues that have come up in the survey. And then the last thing that I have is, this weekend, both tomorrow and Saturday, the village is hosting, along with the Special Events, a village-wide garage sale. There are printed copies of the addresses for all of the garage sales available through the Village Hall, the Park District, Westmont Library, and the Special Events Office at 1 South Cass. If you can't get to one of those, then certainly avail yourself of that list on top on our website for the village. So make sure you come out and go shopping. It's fun. It's going to be great weather. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Addington.
Several things this evening. First, yesterday morning at 9:00, the Economic Development Committee met with a new member, by the way. Bob Scott has now joined our committee, and it's glad to have, glad to have him and his experience with us. We had very interesting presentation. Some of us have waited eagerly for, to see what was going to happen at the Connie's Pizza location. They've changed what they're doing. They're now going to call it the Wood Grain Neapolitan Pizzeria, and it's going to be, again, the wood grain goes into, it'll be wood-fired ovens, and the pizzas will be, it's almost like, as they said, it's like going through Subway. You just decide what you want to put on it, and they'll make it any way you want it. And so it sounds different. It sounds interesting. It's definitely not what it was before. There will not be deliveries. This is not your typical pizza place, so we think it's going to be different and unique and kind of fun. So they're anticipating, I think they said, this fall, maybe by October.
And one of the keys was the speed, that, you know, very high heat oven.
Yeah. Yeah. They get those ovens really hot, and then the pizza's actually cooking a couple minutes. So we're looking forward to that. We're planning some video, some trips over the fall. We definitely want to visit some of our local grocery stores, and I think that's a growing market in this area, so we'll keep you informed as that goes on. Video gaming has been a discussion, and I think that's going to be in front of Planning and Zoning on August 12th at their regular meeting. So if you have any interest or want to hear no more about that, you can come to Planning and Zoning meeting. We want to welcome, several new businesses are now open in town. Dairy Queen, which is at 695 North Cass, Flo's Tips and Toes at 128 South Cass, Responsible Driving over on 700 East Ogden, and Coco Froyo, which is over here between Sweet and Savory and the Knights of Columbus Hall with their frozen yogurts. They're all up and running, and you'll find them very enjoyable. And economic development is good right now. We're very happy with everything, and I think that there'll be more about that later. I wanted to just offer a quick congratulations. She couldn't stand it anymore. Chief Mulhern drove her out of her job, but Deb Rice retired from the, as Secretary to the Chief at the Police Department after...
Thirty-one.
How many years?
Thirty-one. Over thirty-one years.
She has six different Chiefs going all the way to Dick Johnson, and super lady, and we wish her nothing but the best, and she survived Tommy Mulhern, she can survive anything. And the next thing I have is just a quick update for Legislative. You had the report that Steve made. I also have sent some information out that I think will be distributed. The long and the short right now is, nothing's happening, folks. They decided not to agree... She survived Tommy Mulhern, she can survive anything. The next thing I have is just a quick update for legislative. You had the report that Steve made. I also have sent some information out that I think will be distributed. The long and the short right now is, nothing's happening, folks. They've decided not to agree on anything. It's gotten a little silly. I think manager May sent out the one email that talked about whether they're going to pay us on the, on the gaming income or not. You know, these are all just ploys and chess piece maneuverings to see who's gonna, who's going to blink first. That's all this is. But in the meantime, as our, as our legislative liaison down in Springfield said, it just, it's a lot of, lot of noise, no action. We talked about this, this revenue sharing that has been on the table. That's now on a back burner. They're talking another couple months before they even get to even discussing whether there's going to be any change in, in the revenue sharing to municipalities. It's, it's really a shame, but it's where it is. So...
Well, the delay helps us get through this budget year.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. The more of the delay, the better it is, and, and, but I, I mean, it's, I think everybody saw the, the Illinois Senate passed a tax freeze, a real estate tax freeze bill, and the prediction is that the Illinois House may not even address it. It'll just sit there and languish. I don't understand how a legislative body can do that, but it's, Springfield is different. Matter of fact, we, we were at People's Resource Center the other day, and Representative Roscom came and talked, and he even said Springfield makes Washington look good. And that's hard to do. The last thing I have is just a quick recap. We're still going forward with the strategic recap process, and we've had our two, we've had two public hearings with about thirty-five, forty of our residents who participated. All that information is being pulled together, and I think the next step now, Steve, will be, will be a process with here, in front of the board.
For...
Strategic planning.
There is, the, the next step would be, so the community workshop was done, and then the next step will be essentially called a formation of a synthesis team...
Right.
...that will compile the results from the community workshop, the staff workshop, and all our work put together. And then the, the next public step would be a presentation to the village board, and then there's more public input after that.
Yeah. But it's moving forward. And the last thing I have is the Westmont Lions Club will be bringing the hearing bus into town on Thursday, August the 20th. That'll be part of our street fair project. And any of you wives out there who think your husbands have selective hearing loss, bring them there, and we'll be more than happy to screen them and let you know what we found out. And that's it, mayor.
What's the date?
August the 20th.
Okay. Thank you. And now, going back to one item I held off on, and we started, I know if Larry McIntyre would like to please come up to the podium along with chief Mulhern, and I think Glenn Liljberg will come up, but we started a public service appreciation award a little over a year ago, where we're acknowledging our own employees that have gone over and above the call of duty and performed their tasks. And we want to recognize a couple of those individuals tonight. Now, Larry, if you have just an introduction?
Sure. I'll just mention a little bit of the procedure behind this. Almost on a monthly basis, we reach out internally within our organization, as well as to the community at large, and ask people to nominate staff for excellent customer service, because we want to recognize folks who are doing a great job. And each time we solicit the nominations, we probably get about a dozen folks nominated, and then those names are forwarded to a committee, and we have representation from the library, the chamber, village hall, park district, and that group narrows it down, and they make the selections. And then we bring those people forward and recognize them here at the meeting. So at this point, I'd like to turn over to chief Mulhern, because the recipient of this next award is not only a public service award, but also a chief's accommodation award.
Thank you, Larry. If I could have Dan Cantorino come up and join me up here. If you remember from the last board meeting, my deputy chief, Ross Brunson, nominated two residents and Dan. Dan was unable to make it to a family commitment, and he can't be here tonight. For incident, it happened approximately two months ago. Dan is a public works employee. Dan was out doing his job, just driving by with his partner in the truck, and they observed a pit bull type, boxer-type dog attacking another smaller dog. And the female resident was there in distress, as this dog was not only attacking her animal, which would be very stressful, but also she was bitten herself. And Dan, without thinking, exited his truck, approached the area, and tried to get the dog, the attacking dog, off the victim dog, and had a very hard time doing so. He tried to punch the pit bull boxer-type dog in an attempt to break its grip on the smaller animal's neck, and was unsuccessful in doing so. The dog maintained its grip, and so Dan put the dog in a bear hug, I believe, and was able to fall back and separate, by doing those actions through force, was able to separate the pit bull type boxer dog from the smaller animal. That dog was then rushed by other residents, citizens who had stopped to help. This was drawing attention. Dan's partner in the truck went to try to go get help by calling 911 and ran into one of our sergeants at the public works facility, and sought help that way. But the other witnesses and victims took the victim to the, Anar's Animal, to the animal hospital. The animal did survive. It was a very traumatic event, and the victim was attended to for her wounds as well, as was asked at the last board meeting. This was just a dog that was estranged. I believe it was a resident dog from the area, and with the help of our community service officer taking action that way. But deputy chief Brunson, and I agree wholeheartedly, felt that Dan's actions not only saved that dog's life, but, you know, the traumatized fact of the victim and his actions without thinking put him on self, put himself in jeopardy. Here's a dog attacking another dog that already attacked the dog's owner, and now he's going to put him, try to separate himself, or put himself between the attacking dog and the victim dog, which is a very dangerous situation. And I felt he deserved recognition from the police department, as well as Dan was submitted by members of the street department to the customer service appreciation award. So I'm honored to, tonight, mayor, if you could help me, please?
You will.
I'm honored to be give, to be able to have Dan here and give him two awards. And the first will be a certificate of appreciation is awarded to Dan Cantorino for your quick thinking and actions in separating two dogs who were fighting, and where one dog received serious injuries during that attack. Your quick actions helped save the life of a valued family pet. This was dated on the 23rd day of July 2015, signed by me. So that is one certificate we'll give you. And the other one is for the customer service appreciation award, and the mayor will present this to him, and it reads Village of Westmont Customer Service Award 2015. The certificate is awarded to Daniel Cantorino in recognition for the outstanding level of service you provide to the residents of the Village of Westmont, signed by Ronald J. Gunther and by Stephen May.
And Dan said earlier, as long as I don't, he doesn't have to hug me, he's fine, so... Because he put you in the chokehold.
Is there something you'd like to say? If you could take that microphone away from chief?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this time, I'd like Glenn Liljberg to present our other appreciation award.
At this time, I'd like to invite Fred up to the podium. Fred Stefani has been working with the IT department for quite a while now.
Two thousand seven.
Yeah, two thousand seven. And very quickly, if you've had a chance to work with Fred, his nickname quickly became Captain Awesome by the staff in the village. If you've ever received a phone call from him, that's his caller ID on his cell phone as well. But Fred, Fred has always gone well beyond his job to service both the residents, as well as the employees here at the village. You'll always be greeted by a smile by Fred. He's very enthusiastic with his job. Even starting at 6:00 AM in the morning, you'll always find him with a smile. And he's been nominated multiple times for this award. I'm really privileged to be able to present this to him, and I'll have the mayor come up and present the certificates.
Open it up. Got your name on it spelled right? Congratulations. You get to talk.
I'd just like to say it's a pleasure helping people communicate with machines and machines communicate with people.
Going beyond, you know, the call of duty for the village. Moving on, we'll move on to items to remove from the consent agenda. Are there any items the trustees would like removed? Seeing none, I then ask manager May if he could read the consent agenda.
Mayor, first on the consent agenda this evening are village board minutes. Village Board to consider approving the minutes of the village board meeting held July 23rd, 2015. Next is finance ordinance number seven, in the amount of eight-hundred-twenty-four-thousand-one-hundred-twenty-one dollars and forty-six cents. Next, we have purchase orders. First purchase order for CDS Office Technologies, ten-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty dollars. These are to replace the interview room cameras in the police department. Second purchase order, Cloud Sherpas, nineteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars. That represents the annual Google Apps renewal, the subscription. Third purchase order, Dorner Company, six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars for a repair made in the water plant. Jay Condon Sewer Services is the next purchase order, in the amount of seven-hundred-sixty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and ten cents. This is actually, well, it's, it's an open purchase order for the contract that was previously awarded, representing the water main improvements on West End and Park Street. Next purchase order, last purchase order is Vidito Tree Experts, fifteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars and fifty cents, representing forty-four tree removals totaling six-hundred-and-seventy-five inches in diameter. The total of the purchase orders is then eight-hundred-eighteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety dollars and sixty cents, which brings the total of the purchase orders and finance ordinance number seven to one-million-six-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-twelve dollars and six cents. That completes the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second. On the question?
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
You know, in our finance meeting, Steve, we were talking about changing those limits. So if we change the limits, would these items here, four of these, be red? Anything that was less than twenty thousand dollars would not be red?
Twenty thousand dollars is where we started the conversation, wouldn't be red, and there's one purchase order here greater than that. We talked about moving that limit to ten thousand, and that would include four of the purchase orders that are remained.
Yep. Thank you.
As far as I advised separately on the agenda, right?
Yep. Thanks.
Any other questions? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, I ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo. Yes. Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little. Yes. Trustee Barry.
Yes. Moving on, unfinished business, there, we do not have anything. We'll move on to new business. A Jamestown Detention Pond Modification Project. It's a change order request. The board to consider an ordinance to approve change order number one for the Jamestown Detention Pond Modification Project. I'll ask manager May to give us some information.
The Jamestown Detention Pond Modification Project itself is, is essentially the replacement of the outlet pipe for those existing detention basins. And the outlet pipe, if you can picture any basin, the, the depth of the bottom of the basin, and then the pipe runs through the high berm or the walls of the rest of the property. So it is, it is deep work, and why we contracted out. The change order represents doing similar work with the same contractor under the contract provisions, but at three different locations in town, where we've been trying to arrange for this work with separate proposals, and admittedly totaling anywhere from, you know, sixty to eighty thousand dollars, you know, for two of these locations for years, we've been trying to, since the Chris Burke study with the village-wide stormwater. So it is installation of, the change order represents three proposals totaling thirty-six-thousand-five-hundred dollars. At Richmond and Lincoln, and actually, it's the Richmond-Grant low area, but at Richmond and Lincoln, putting a, a structure, a manhole, over the outlet pipe that drains that area and installing a backflow preventer to make sure that water doesn't surcharge back into Grant and Richmond. Black Hawk Park is, is a situation where the, the outlet restrictor is in the structure in the bottom of the basin, so when it's plugged and flooded, there is no way to unplug it without pumping the basin out. So this is to add, again, a manhole, but on the, on the dry side of the basin, and move the restrictor to that location so that we can access it. And the last one, where it's fire department headquarters detention facility, that's actually where the detention basin that we maintain on Bennenford interfaces with the one at the fire department, and similarly, we perpetually have to pump that dry to do maintenance on it. This will install the access manhole in the berm so that we can access it immediately.
Do I have a motion?
That's the description of the word.
Motion to approve, Barry.
Second, Barker.
Motion made in second to approve as presented. On the question? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little. Yes. Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo. Yes. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
New business B, purchase of real estate. Board to consider an ordinance authorizing real estate contracts by the Village of Westmont for the purchase of, one, 412 North Warwick Avenue, two, 414 North Warwick Avenue, three, 416 North Warwick Avenue, for the purposes of neighborhood stormwater management. I'd ask manager May to give some additional information.
Yeah, these three properties are contiguous neighboring properties. They're immediately across the street from the other properties that we own, where also referring to that village-wide Chris Burke study, the, in that area is to do stormwater management in the form of mitigating the, the flooding issue that happens over the road and closing that block and, and putting it in a managed areas on the side. So that is the intended purpose of the parcels. There are three locations where we've negotiated contracts with the homeowners at these three addresses. Can they vote on it as a, as a block?
One vote.
Okay. And if there was any questions regarding use?
Can I have a motion to approve?
So move Guzzo.
Second, Addington.
Motion made in second. On the question? Anybody in the audience? Nope. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo. Yes. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little. Yes. Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
New business C, code amendment, bond forfeiture. Board to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 18, Section 18-488 of the Westmont Code of Ordinances regarding bond forfeitures. Attorney Zemanak.
Thank you, mayor. The village has existing Section 18-488 of its Code of Ordinances that addresses bond deposits that developers must make for development projects in the village. That ordinance describes the procedures and the amount of the bond, and it also provides that if a bond is not redeemed within two years after completion of the project, it's forfeited to the village. What this ordinance does is clarify the procedures as to how the village is going to use that forfeited bond money. If the project is complete and, or substantially complete, and there's no outstanding public safety, stormwater, whatever issues involving that property, the village is going to take that forfeited bond money and put it into a stormwater management fund for general village-wide stormwater improvements. If there are items that need to be completed on the property that are significant, either because typically involving drainage impacting this property or adjacent properties, the village may use that money to remedy the problem. There was no direction to staff in the past how that bond money should be used. And we do have situations where builders go bankrupt, or builders just disappear, and that bond money's sitting there. So this just clarifies those procedures. I did pass out tonight a revised ordinance that highlighted two very minor changes from what was in your agenda packet.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second, Addington.
Motion made in second. And on the question.
Question.
Okay, Trustee Barker.
Do we have, Steve, do you know over the past year, past two years, how often we have forfeited bonds? Is it three times, five times?
I don't, I don't even think it's once a year. The last one was a subdivision that was incomplete and we, actually, two subdivisions and they were, all the bond money was confiscated and then we contracted out the remaining work was the example. So we actually finished the improvements. We couldn't, in one case, there were more improvements than there was bond money to support that, so we worked with the homeowners association about prioritizing what would get done. But those are the only two examples. I can't think of any. We're not talking building permits, are we talking?
No, we're talking not just letters of credit for public improvements, but also general building bond deposits that have to be made that are in a smaller amount. And I know Kim Nichol has a list of such bonds that are kind of sitting there and they've made every effort possible to reach out to the developer. Are you going to finish this? Are you still around? Are you still alive trying to get this money returned to them if the project's done or trying to get them to come in? Sometimes it's just ads, as-built engineering drawings.
Yeah.
So if two years pass and our efforts fail, then that money can be used.
So it's for any cash bonds?
Yeah.
Okay. So last year, we had about $22,000 worth of forfeited cash bonds that went to take care of general operating items in the general fund, so general.
Do you know a quantity of?
I don't know how many that was, no, but it was $22,000 worth. We typically budget about $3,000 worth for it. So if this is the case, then in future years, that $3,000 would not be in the general fund, it would be in the stormwater fund. So, thank you.
So Steve, on a single-family home, is there a required bond if an individual's building a single-family home?
One percent of the total cost of the project, not to exceed $10,000.
So in a situation where we have a couple of these around town that are quarter of the way built, halfway built, that bond does not cover us to really tear them down or anything like that, right? I mean, it's, it's a pretty small percentage of-
Absolutely. It's more come into play, as Steve mentioned, with a project where there's a letter of credit and a significant amount to cover a larger project, the public improvement aspect of that project. So we've come in and either finished out roadways or finished out detention or done some landscaping that was necessary. But this would apply to single-family homes if, you know, there's, it might cover the as-built drawings. It might cover a pipe, a drainage pipe that needs to be done to complete something because there's still some flooding problems.
It is still private property, so there's typically a court process we have to go through first to, you know, either finish and remedy or undo what had been done.
Which we have several of those going on currently, right?
Yes.
But actually, you may also have a situation where you have a homeowner who's moved in and a developer's left town, left their bond money and the homeowner is begging the village, is there anything you can do? And so, yeah, we got $3,000 bucks, we can help you.
Get the CO.
Any other questions?
You know, the biggest forfeiture that we were ever-
If not, I'd ask for roll call, please. Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
So the new business, we'll move to miscellaneous. I have one item I'd like to, the Richmond Street, was that another water main break on Richmond Street again?
I'm actually unfamiliar with that.
Oh, I think it was a boil water in the neighborhood and I think that's the one water main we're probably going to-
Water main, I can say it was somewhere on, we're up to like fifteen breaks on that block and I talked to you about the reconstruction costs and everything, so we'll be initiating the engineering for that for 2016 replacement.
That's why I brought it up because that line continually has breaks. Any other miscellaneous?
Sure, as long as we've got miscellaneous coming, we might. Steve, I noticed around town that we've done some of the grading on the sidewalks and I was hoping Noriel would be here and I'm sure he would have the answer, but we've cleaned up some of those sidewalks where they have the different levels and we've ground them down. I've noticed on like 57th Street, it seems like they kind of stopped and that maybe they're excessive and they're spotted with orange dots. Does that mean we're going to be going back and replacing those sidewalks in those areas, that it couldn't be ground?
I can't say for sure, but there are, you mean, they didn't even attempt to grind it in their mark?
Looked like they started. Some of these were blacktop patched either from years ago or possibly residents.
If the trip hazard is significant enough, they'll go out and put asphalt in there immediately to mitigate the hazard. We do have a grinder that we use in-house. It is very coarse. It's not pretty and we go through there and grind things down and it does a good job as far as, you know, mitigating the hazard. We've also, for the first time, used a new company that does more, it's more like a sawing operation where they cut that out and it's turned out very well and Mr. Vath is extremely pleased with it and, you know, hopes to get more money to do more of those. But sometimes when it's, you know, if the sidewalk slab's only five inches thick and you have to cut two inches out of it, then replacement is usually, you know, the answer. So if it's been painted, you know, normally I see white arrows like the limits of what they're going to do the replacement, so if there's just a dot on it, they might be using that service to come in and try and rectify it. But I'll find out, I just don't know the details of that location.
Well, this is my trustee Barker's house, so I want it to be nice when it's finished.
Okay. I'll take care of it.
Thank you. I tripped there every-
Any other miscellaneous? Chief? Oh, come on. I thought it was nice for trustees.
Don't say I'll be short, I'll be brief. Mayor, thank you. I forgot to get the trustee narrow. Next Thursday night at the street fair to special, to benefit Special Olympics, we're having a paper shredding event where people can come and just bring items of paper shredding. There is no charge, but we do ask for donation, whatever you feel would be right to give to the event. All the proceeds, this is again, the Special Olympics, all the event goes and all the money raised goes to Special Olympics. We had one earlier in the year at the Police Department, it was very successful, so an honor to help out with the street fair. We'll be having one there. So please, I believe it's from 7:00 to 9:00. I'm not quite sure exactly where, but Larry will be putting out a press release on this later this week. So please, if you have any sensitive documents that you just don't want to put away in the garbage, they should be shredded and shredded properly. You can do so free, but, you know, or if you wish to make it a donation, which we encourage, but it's not required. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And I was a little misunderstood on the recycling and I'm glad that you cleared up about the donation because I think a lot of people have the impression that you guys get the recycling money from that, but if there is no donation, the Special Olympics gets nothing.
We've contacted the vendors and the vendors are offering this, this service free of charge because they know it's a donation to a special event. So they are providing it free of charge and all the money that we obtain goes right towards Special Olympics.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, we do not have any item for executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second by Bill.
Motion made second to adjourn. Roll call, please. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Okay, thank everybody for coming and this meeting is adjourned.